And where's our Mayor's Youth Council folks coming up to the front? We got anybody from the Mayor's Youth Council here tonight who's gonna take care of that? Mm-hmm. There we go. And what you, what you gonna do? You stay at that microphone, tap it and make sure it works. Angela's gonna make sure it's on.
Okay.
How do you introduce yourself to everybody?
I'm Lauren Lewis. I'm a sophomore in Brandon High School and I'm part of Mayor's Youth Council and I'll be saying the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Join me when we pray. You gonna pray for us too?
I can.
Well, why don't you do that? That's a very nice thing.
All right. Bow your heads. Lord, thank you for letting us all join for this meeting. I pray for all the people in Brandon and that any issues may be resolved and that you will watch over all of us, especially during this tornado. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Y'all would give her a shout out applause. As you know, it's not easy. Some of you in here would remember being that age and trying to get up in front of a bunch of people that you don't know and saying a word. I hear you going deaf in your old age. Now you hear me. Can you hear me in the back of the room? I'm not looking at you, Angela. Sorta? If I raise my voice, start yelling, better? All right. So evidently the microphone's turned down, so I'll talk loud tonight. Appreciate y'all being here. And we're gonna start off with a little bit of something different. I wanna take a moment. I know some of you probably wanna leave a little bit early, so we're gonna take a moment and take privilege here on the agenda to take a swearing in here of a new police chief. So if you would, Mr. French?
I'll get down in front. I pledge my name. I, Joseph French Thompson, swear. I solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States. To support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi. And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi. And the laws thereof. And the laws thereof. That I am not unqualified. That I am not unqualified. For performing duties. For performing duties. Of police duties. Of police duties. And by the means of. By the means of. And I will. And I will. Perform duties. Perform duties. The best model. The best model. For a, uh, sir, help me out.
I want to be a mayor. Once a mayor, always a mayor. Once a chief, always a chief. Chief Thompson, you got something you wanna say to the audience and board? I don't know if that one's hot. Check, check it out and see. Okay?
Mayor have five items on the agenda. May I take all these together? I couldn't resist that one. And I'm gonna read this because y'all know how I am when I get tongue-tied sometimes. Mayor and Board of Alderman.
Close to the mic, please, sir.
Mayor and Board of Alderman, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and supporting your decision to make Joseph French your next chief of police. Selection of chief of police is not a decision that should be taken lightly. The officer, the officers and I and citizens you see in the audience are here tonight want to commend you on your decision. In selecting Joseph French, you have not only chosen your next chief, with your selection, with all officers, firefighters, paramedics, please stand. All y'all. In selecting Joseph French, you've not only chosen your next chief. With this selection, you'll be bringing the experience and support from the ones you see in the audience tonight. With this support comes experience of police administration, law enforcement training, police, military, and corporate leadership. And firefighters. Y'all, y'all have a seat. And meteor relations, just to name a few. Chief French will not only be going into this, will not be going into this alone. He will have access to all this experience to assist him in making the decisions he will be tasked to make, and subject matter experts in various disciplines to assist in the creation of policy and the selection of his next command staff. I personally worked with Joseph French for many years as chief and know him, and know him what he is, and what he is capable of. I recommend that you provide him with your full and unwavering support as he opens this new chapter in his career. I can attest to the fact that the position of chief comes with many unique stresses that many will never understand. Being most visible department head, being the most visible department head, his decisions and actions will constantly be under the microscope, not only by you, but by the citizens of Brandon. And in some cases, the scrutiny of those who are not the citizens of Brandon. Mayor and Board of Alderman, my advice to you is to trust in Chief French, French's leadership and experience and not what you see on social media. In my experience, social media causes unnecessary damage to the agency and with those that have personal access to grind against law enforcement. Again, I'd like to commend you on your decision to make Joseph French your next chief of police. In the audience tonight, let me see how we got it. We've got Chief Will Jones, Lawrence, Chief of Police, and Chief of the Mississippi Association Chief of Police, Chief David Flenda, former chief, showed up out of nowhere, James Russell, Marshall, just went dead there for a second. We got Charlie Smith, retired JPD, Louis Brooks, retired JPD, Tanya Thompson, JPD, Lieutenant Colonel Stephen Cochrane, and many other friends and neighbors of Joseph French. So again, good job, all y'all, y'all made a fine decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. French, you wanna wait till the end to say anything? Would you like to say anything to the audience?
Thank you, Chief Thompson, for having us up right here. You open up the microphone.
I can hear you.
All right. Thank you, Chief Thompson, for that speech. I don't have nothing prepared, but Chief Thompson, the top of that. Thank y'all for coming out, supporting us, mayor, floor. Thank y'all for choosing wisely and choosing me. But thank y'all. If there's anything I can do for y'all, please, I know the office is, uh, come through. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Chief. So, audience, we've got a two-page agenda here, moves pretty quick. You're welcome to stick around and we will go into executive session and we'll give you an opportunity to visit, visit out in the hall, give us some advice. I know everybody, the room's full of it tonight, right? So, all right. We'll move on with the agenda. Under Old Business, Approve the Regular Board Meeting Minutes of November 6th. Whoop. Ah, okay. Terry, Greg. Now you have to list in those firefighters that you don't like too much.
Well, I'm Greg Pafford, owner of Pafford EMS. This week's Thanksgiving, eight years ago, 2015, y'all took a chance on me. I'm very thankful y'all chose Pafford EMS. Y'all didn't know me from Adam's House Cat. First time I met Terry Wages was in the hallway. But I just want y'all to know, we're very thankful for the police and fire department. We couldn't do the job we do every day without the fire department, police coverage and backup. I wanna, you know, I think y'all sticking y'all's neck out in 2015, other cities in the state has done the same with their EMS district, city of Starkville, city of Pearl. Which other one's Terry?
Uh, let's see, we got the Greenville, Greenwood.
Yeah.
Four, sixteen counties in the state.
Sixteen counties in the state of Mississippi. Providing two helicopters in the state of Mississippi now and a fixed wing aircraft in the city of Jackson. I moved to Brandon, Mississippi now, so I'm not officially to vote yet, I gotta move all that over, but I just wanna say thank you. Terry come on board with us full-time after he retired at the Fire Academy, chief of EMS. And if y'all have any questions or concerns, always pick up the phone and we can handle it or I can answer any of them today. Thank y'all. You got anything, Terry?
Yeah, I'm not gonna miss this opportunity to speak in front of the board. Been a long time, hasn't it? First off, I wanna thank you. Thirteen years ago, you took a chance on me coming here to the city of Brandon, be at the fire department. It was an experience. I stayed here eight years, learned so much, but as Greg said, what happened eight years ago roughly was, it was a coincidence that things came together the way they did, but it was also planned, but the, the way it all happened was just unique. And the system that was developed was a chance we was taking on a system that had never really worked anywhere. And that was a fire-based EMS system. But what that's done in the last eight years is set the standard in not only Mississippi, but Oklahoma and Arkansas and Louisiana on how ambulance response systems can integrate and work and be flexible and transparent and be able to address problems directly and immediately. And I think that's what makes Pafford successful, is accessibility to someone that can fix it when it needs fixing. That's just a simple formula. And thank you all. Again, it's, it's been a long road and being retired from the fire service is a little weird to me, but, you know, going into the EMS side of it and helping Greg and helping him run this company has been a true blessing. So thank you. I wanna introduce Freddie Parker sitting back here. Everybody knows Freddie, been around forever. Freddie runs, he's a director of operations for Central Mississippi and he does a lot to help run this system, keep it straight. So thank you all again.
I've got one question, Greg. An audience, so to put parentheses around that, Brandon didn't stick their neck out. We just took a very proactive approach in creating the first municipal EMS district in the state of Mississippi. And that was somewhat hard fought, but we succeeded in that. And that was the model that's been used going forward to other cities and counties, that you can create an EMS district inside local government. And that helped a lot. And I remember Mr. Baker here asked a question of Greg when we were having these meetings of, well, what do we do? Who do we call when we have a problem? You know, if you tried to call somebody with a problem in a big corporation, sometimes you'd get chains of people you'd have to get through. And Greg said very quickly and very easily, well, you call me and I fix it. And that's the way business ought to be and that's the way public safety ought to be. You take care of the problem right then. So I do have one question for you. Some years ago, we had a, you had a program where people could do a $50 a year or something like that to have ambulance provided to that family over a year's time? And are you still doing that?
Yes, sir.
Would step up to the microphone so that we can let everybody know?
Yes, sir. We have a membership program that you get a 60% discount if Medicare or your insurance company don't pay. So if you're a Medicare, Medicaid, Medicaid patient, you don't need a membership. We have to accept what they pay on a Medicare patient. We get to write off 20% of what you would have to pay and then whatever the insurance company don't, you'd get a 60% discount. But we should be doing that after the first of the year, do a mass mail-out.
Okay.
For the city of Brandon.
Begin to communicate that better. Answer your question, that answer your question, Marcus? All right, good. All right. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Now moving on to Old Business, Approve the Regular Boarding Minutes of November 6th, 2023, and the Special Board Meeting Minutes of November 8th, 2023. Motion. Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Chris Vinson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. And, audience, we do have one empty chair and Harry Williams is enjoying an anniversary moment with his wife, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Ms. Bean?
Is she, are you happy now?
Ms. Bean, fire away.
Can I take the first item and then the rest all together?
Yes, ma'am.
The first item is consideration to pay an invoice from Specialty Tree Service LLC in the amount of $15,000 for work performed on Eastwood Drive. And Mark, I think you have some.
Okay, go ahead.
This is, we, we, if you'll remember, we had two, two parts of this program. One was a $5,000 deal for the trees on, on the road that we got the easement for. That was a trade-off. And then this was the rest of the trees. We, we didn't approve the $15,000, although that was discussed in, in the project as it was presented before, with Gage Sullivan taking those out. So as part of the read-in on that, I would like you to first find that the professional services were rendered and completed within the understanding and expectation of the board, further finding that the cost is same as just and consistent with that presentation, and finding that the claim for professional services is bona fide and lawful, and making such other findings as, as required under MCA Section 25147-2 with regard to the payment of that claim.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baker. You good with that, Ms. Bean?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Is there a motion to approve, number one?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Luke Coker, second by Mr. Jared Crane. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign?
The next item, consideration to accept the terms of the local consent agreement with Mississippi Office of Homeland Security regarding the FY22 state local cybersecurity grant program, allowing MOHS to retain funds from said grant cycle and further authorize submission of MOHS FY22 SLCGP interest survey form indicating the city's interest in participating in the state and local cybersecurity grant program as administered by the state and further authorize the mayor to execute related documents. Number three, consideration to clear surplus property, various items from Parks and Recreation Department, finding them to be no longer of use and benefit to the city and further authorize the sale of the same through GovDills. Number four, request permission to publish a bid notice for a point-of-sale system for the Brandon Amphitheater. Number five, consideration to accept quote from Metro Building Services in the amount of $9,069 as the lowest and best for repairs needed for Circuits 1 and 2 of the Library Chiller. Number six, consideration to prove the docket of claims for November 20th, the Fox Everett claims released on October 30, November 2, and 16.
Thank you, Ms. Angela. Is there a motion to approve, 236?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Jared Crane, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Thank you, Ms. Angela.
You want me to take number, the next one?
Sure.
Consideration to approve professional services agreements for the purpose of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill 1521, authorize the mayor to execute the same and approve payment of all show-related expenditures for Great Day Touring, Inc., for a performance by Travis Tritt on April 27th at the Brandon Amphitheater, and also Great Day Touring for a performance by Frank Foster on April 27th.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to approve that from Event Services? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. David Ferris. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Angela. Thank you, board.
I have four items tonight. Would like to take them all together.
Yes, sir.
Number one, consideration to accept quotes from Southern Sullivan Construction and Southern Rock LLC for a drainage improvement project at the entrance of Bella Vista and award to Southern Construction as the lowest and best quote received in the amount of Number two, request permission to develop plans and publish a bid notice for the Glen Arbor Court Drainage Improvement Project. Number three, considerations to declare an emergency for the repairs to Ellington Court Lift Station and authorize payments to WW Solutions in the amount of $18,832.49. And number four, consideration to award the bid in the amount of $1,374,492 for the Lance Martin East Haven Sewer Rehabilitation Project to Suncoast Infrastructure as the lowest and best bid received.
Thank you, Paul and board. Number four is an ARPA project. We have a couple more smaller ones to do. And that will just about finish that up. All right. Is there a motion to approve those four items?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Jared Crane.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chris Vinson. Any questions on those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Got one item, sir. Consideration to allow Wilson Key to expand temporary staging, lay down and overflow parking pursuant to the memo.
Thank you, Sam. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Luke Coker, second by Ms. Jared Crane. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, Sam. Thank you, board. All right, chief.
All right, I have three items. Permission to take them as one?
I'm trying to hold Mr. Baker off of you.
Okay. First, permission to declare $41,080 as forfeited funds and deposit into the drug seizure account and authorized disbursements to the Rankin County District Attorney's Office and Rankin County Sheriff's Department in accordance with Mississippi Code 4129-181. A number two is request permission to hire Valora Lewis as a deputy court clerk effective November 21st, 2023, and set rate of pay in accordance with the memo. Number three is consideration to approve the salary increase of Officer Hayden Lucans effective November 20th, 2023, upon completion of the loaded training pursuant to the memo.
Thank you, chief. Is there a motion to approve those three items? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. David Ferris. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I have one item. Want me to take it together?
Yes, sir.
I request permission to hire Cody Cole as a professional firefighter at set rate of pay pursuant to the memo. Mr. Cole isn't here tonight, he's working out of town in Louisiana. I told him to stay there since I was driving through the weather to turn around and drive back tonight.
There you go. Maybe bring him next board meeting. All right. Is there a motion to approve that request?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Jared Crane, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you.
Thank you.
Board would like to retire to determine the necessity of being in executive session. Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Luke Coker. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, board. We will retire into the break room.
Mr. Mayor, there was, there was one vote taken in executive session with regard to potential litigation.